Appeals, seven thousand.
You ready, Mr. Johnson? We call the Newport City Council meeting order for Monday, February 6th, 2017, 6:30 PM. Members of the council are present with the exception of Mr. Morrison, who is absent. Others include Mr. Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Ms. Dogan, our city manager. Almost like city clerk treasurer again. The next item is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23rd. And I would entertain a motion on that.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, move it up.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second may led by Mr. Vincent. Second round of discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item will be to approve the minutes of a special February 1st, 2017, meeting. Now we need a motion.
So no, that'll be a short one.
Yes. Motion made by Mr. Vincent. Is there a second?
No second.
Second round of Mr. Robers. Discussion on that.
Yeah, there's about six typos in there, and I will give the copies of the typos.
Mr. Robers versus Mr. Morrison's.
Yeah, but the city manager changed her name.
City manager.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man.
I gotta admit, I went quite a while.
It's not my idea.
So shall we wait? We can wait at least until the next meeting? We can wait until all that's all changed.
Approval changes.
All right, approval with changes. All right, so motion made and seconded, approve the minutes with changes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Shall I just combine and sign the official corrected copy tomorrow?
Yeah.
It'd be better. Next item is comments by members of the public. If anyone has anything. That's not on our regular agenda. And if there's nothing, we'll move on. Next item is Misha Settner.
Yep, you got it.
From permit analyst, lake and shoreline permitting, aquatic plant control.
Yeah, so my name is Misha Settner. I'm with the Vermont D E C Lakes and Ponds Program. I am the supervisor for the regulatory program with the lakes and ponds section. So I oversee the lake encroachment permits, shoreline permits, and I primarily take the lead on aquatic plants control permits. I've worked with Andy Capella on moving on two projects. One for hydro raking and one for bottom barriers at the city docks right down the street. And so just today, sent out two draft decisions. Permits approving the use of a hydro rake and another permit approving the use of bottom barriers. Each permit is effective for 10 years. However, the hydro raking, during the effective period of that permit, hydro raking can only be done once. Hydro raking itself is, it's like a form of dredging. Just instead of kind of a traditional dredging mechanics, it's a kind of a small paddle wheeled craft that has an eight, 10-foot long arm on it with an eight-foot wide rake. And the use of that machine is primarily used to scoop out root systems of aquatic plants. So in places like a marina, kind of smooth operation of that marina does a bit better without 100% plant growth disrupting the daily flow. And then with the bottom barriers, worked with Andy on putting together a yearly installation removal process for bottom barriers. This is an addition to hydro raking to be used when needed. And that's valid for 10 years. But the use of that, it'd be similar to hydro raking where it'd be used to pretty much smother any kind of aquatic growth in the marina area to allow for public use of that location. So that's kind of a quick summary of.
Yeah, because I know the weeds get so bad down there, it actually starts to smell as they start to come up and rot and decay. It gets pretty bad down there. But this, none of these permits allow for, like if the current has, not current, but if boats with their motors are current, has caused it to increase the sand height. That won't allow that to be put back down. You see what I'm saying? Because there's a spot down, I can tell you down there, where even the boat launch is filled in. And I think it's from the boats, because the boats.
Prop wash.
Prop wash is what I'm getting at. Thank you, prop wash. And that won't allow us to kind of take care of that because it's getting harder for people to put their powerboats in and out too. They got it back way out, and even then they're not on the launch. And then the whole inside has kind of started to fill in.
So that'd be another project we could work with you on? So that's, I've worked with Vermont Fish and Wildlife Program. They run the access area program for, I think, 250 access areas around the state. And that's a problem that they run into frequently where they get sedimentation occurring right around that boat launch area. And it creates these prop wash kind of mounds.
Sandbars.
Sandbars that interrupt, you know, safe launching of treble boats. So with that, that's usually a dredging style project. Dredging is regulated under the lake encroachment statute, which just regulates addition or removal of fill below minimum water level. So typically, projects like that, you need to make a public good finding, assess how that project may impact public trust uses such as boating, fishing, or swimming. So when there's potential to have a project that removes a potential safety hazard to improve the flow of boating traffic, that improves things like navigation and public use of that area. So even though dredging is, it's fairly disruptive. It's really messy. It's quite expensive. We try to avoid it unless really truly necessary. So that's, that's a project that we would work with you on.
Okay. I was just curious, because I know inside the main dock, the old, the old twelve, the original one, caused prop wash and caused the mound to develop. And that wasn't there before the boat was actually, because I think what happens when he backed it out to go up that prop and cause the sediment to move. And it has caused a mound that people hit quite often. Sailboats, not powerboats, sailboats.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, so something like that. Base schematics of kind of what the current depths are, kind of like an underwater map as to what you know is there currently and then what target depths would be to allow for, you know, safe recreation and navigation in that area.
So who has a hydro rake? Where are we going to?
So hydro rakes, those are designed for plant removal. And then dredging, that's, there's different forms of dredging. There can be more intense, kind of like barge based.
Sure.
Does hydro raking get the roots, or is that more or less?
Yes, yeah. So hydro raking is, yeah.
So why would we need to dred, oh, unless we needed a deeper, a deeper area.
Like because of pop wash.
Yeah, so. Because of the pop washing area.
Yeah, so it's, hydro raking, it's kind of just like raking the lake bottom. Also very messy, but primarily used for plants. It may give you some minor sediment relief by just taking out the sediment that's tied into the root systems. But if you're looking to do dredging, it's typically more intensive style machinery.
So this rake removes product too? I mean, it cuts it off and then harvests it, gets it out of there?
Yeah, so it's depending on what machine they may use. It's, you know, an eight to 10-foot long excavator arm with a rake on the end of it.
So who's there? Are you referring to us or?
No.
We, so that's then our job. So I've been talking to a contractor out of Massachusetts that has this equipment that does this commercially. And that outfit, that Solitude, I think is the Solitude Lake Management. And they were recommended to us by Ann Bowles, I believe, at the state.
So that's not the dredging, that's the rake?
That's the rake.
The rake, and that's the initial step.
So you would go in first and rake and dredge? Well, you couldn't dredge, just, well, dredging. Yeah. We don't need a permit to rake?
Well, we do. That's where this is over here.
Okay. So are we going to break fragments of that off that's going to escape and transplant somewhere else?
Uh, yes. So with the hydro raking draft decision that was just sent out today, it includes language that would require a sediment curtain. So when the project is happening, significant amounts of sediment are produced as well as fragmentation. So that the sediment curtain would keep the project contained.
Kind of like what they do with their building along the road, you see them put.
Yeah.
It's like, it looks like black plastic sometimes. That's the sediment curtain.
So yeah, so this Solitude Lake Management Company, it's kind of the one business that does this kind of work.
So let's talk about our other spot that milfoil is a big issue over at Proudy Beach. Is that something that we could use this same device for?
So do you want to?
So Misha and I, this September, I think it was, we went and looked at the dock and Proudy Beach. At Proudy, we thought the best way to manage it would be the hand pulling. So that's using old-fashioned elbow grease. And we have a, it's a device that's like a rake with a V on it that has blades on it. You throw this out and you're cutting the plants. And then they come into shore, you gather them, you pull them away. We talked about potentially doing the hydro raking there. And it's, correct me if I get this wrong, but, you know, that because hydro raking is such an invasive project, an invasive approach to dealing with this, with the problem that creates the opportunity for these plants to come in even more so. Or just your Asian milfoil, whereas now we have a good mix of natives and some non-natives there. So that would give a clean palette then for these non-native invasives to move in. So our plan for now is to do the hand pulling. And then if we continue to see problems, then we'll talk to Misha again and see what the next step is.
So every day, it seems, down at Proudy Beach, there's a beach full of milfoil. That is just the stuff that naturally breaks off, it flows to shore all day.
And that's from wherever. Right.
That's because of the way the current.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a similar site on Champlain as well, where they'll actually get floating islands. But most of these aquatic plants, their lifecycle includes fragmentation. It's part of the reproductive process. So when it washes up on shore, that's just kind of what they do every day. And when we did do that site visit there, it was, the swimming area itself was pretty clear that day. So we decided to like investigate less intrusive feasible alternatives first. Hydro raking is expensive and it's fairly intrusive. So if there's a way that we can still achieve our goal, but minimize the impact to the environment, that's how we settled on hand plane efforts first. And if those aren't successful, then we can ramp up to, you know, more jurisdictional type project like the hydro raking.
I'm just trying to think of the model that we're trying to implement over there at the campground. We're trying to make it, making it its own entity. I don't see where we're going to have the manpower to be pulling any milfoil out of the beach unless.
Well, I think we're doing that, that one.
Well, we're pulling off what comes ashore, but we're not getting any.
All we're doing is taking that.
Yeah, yeah.
Taking what comes ashore. Haven't been out in the water.
Right.
Yeah, this summer.
I don't see any manpower to do that.
So that piece of equipment you just described, is that what we just purchased last year?
No, no.
No, no.
What's the equipment that we bought last year?
It's a similar, it's a similar piece of equipment, but it's.
Doesn't have the depth, does it?
No, doesn't have the depths. And then the one that we have now works better at Proudy Beach for.
Now, don't we have an issue with the dock with depth, watering away for the sailboats?
Well, that's what I was getting at in this.
But you were talking, we just have one area.
Well, I was talking about.
There's issues for bottom barriers with depths.
Yeah.
So my plan is we have this permit that covers the whole area now. And then, so if we hydro rake and if we see an area that pops up that is having trouble, we can put our bottom barriers there and get that under control. And we can do it strategically in places where we do have the depths or where there's a boat that's not going to run into it.
But we were turned down as far as dredging, I understand.
We weren't turned down as far as dredging. We were steered in another direction. Dredging is still there, but it's, we want to try something that's not as intrusive first.
So we're talking max. Those are the maps that we don't have yet, and we're supposed to get a grant for?
We have no plans at this point to do the max. First and foremost, we're going to hydro rake. For now, that's going to, that's going to clear up the plant issue at the dock, probably for a year, maybe three. This, the bottom barrier permit is good for 10 years. So three years, five years down the road, we see issues, then we can put bottom barriers and we don't have to reapply for the permit.
And municipalities are exempt from the permit fee, so.
I'm just thinking.
We're pretty flexible. I'm flexible on mine.
Okay. Three to five years, we put max on, all right?
If needed, right. So, you know, best case scenario, the hydro raking clears us up for much longer than that.
Yeah, it takes, it takes some time for things to free.
So let's talk about, what does it cost to hydro rake?
I don't know. I'm the, I'm just the permit analyst. I don't do the actual contracting.
So I did get a quote to hydro rake. I believe I gave that to you in your packet. And I don't have it in front of me. I want to say it's around $10,000 for the square footage.
So we did budget for that, correct?
We have the money in the budget now.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, I think that needs to be done.
Yeah.
It's terrible down there. You can almost walk across the water there.
It's terrible, and the odor from the weeds, rock out of weeds, it's weeds. Milfoil is a non-native weed that came in. Is there any lakes left in Vermont that don't have it?
Most don't have it.
Most don't have milfoil?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Salem doesn't.
Salem doesn't.
Seymour doesn't either, right? Seymour doesn't.
Okay, I was just.
Yeah, it's.
It's just the bigger lakes, like Champlain and then.
It's typically the larger lakes that receive lots of boating traffic.
Lot of boating traffic. One good thing we don't have is zebra mussels.
Yes, yes. So that's, that is just in Lake Champlain and Lake Bongsey.
Yeah, they're lucky there.
Salem's got a weed problem, but it's not one of them.
No, it's a natural.
You've got blood suckers.
You'll walk across the top of that one.
I'm on.
But okay.
Yeah, Seymour has their own harvester, right?
Seymour has a harvester.
Yeah. Yeah, the association.
The suction harvester?
I.
I've seen those around.
I know they have one.
Just curious, when did they buy it? Just curious, when did they buy it?
Oh, now you're getting.
No, no.
That I don't know.
You didn't hear that here.
You didn't hear that here. Way back.
Cut.
I think they cut it every year.
All right, so you're going to do the marina, but you're not going to do the beach?
Well, they are going to do the beach, but not with the mechanic device. They're going to do it with the, the V puller.
With hand, with hand pulling, with elbow grease.
Well, you, I thought you said there wasn't enough manpower to do that.
There's not enough manpower with the personnel that we have running the campground. If Andy wants to find manpower from the rec department to do it, that's okay. But I don't, I don't think we have enough man, unless we get some, sometimes, you know, we get.
Why don't you do a volunteer thing?
Well, that, or we get students too. We get VSAC students a lot of times that are big help that we could probably use. And, I mean, they'd love that in the summertime, a project like that. So I'm just saying, what we've scheduled for the campground, we want to dedicate, we don't want to take away from the campground. We've ignored that for too long. So I don't want to be distracting the help.
That, that type of work would fit right in with what the campground staff does now, so.
Andy, you ever seen the weed puller work? I mean, the waves like razor blades, because I've seen some of those things thrown out there. And all they do is bend the weed over. They bend them over, sail away over the dock.
We've used it at the dock with pretty good success. And, you know, we're only talking about depths, you know, maybe five feet is about as far. So at that point, we could reach down a whole block to.
To the beach.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not going to, we're, you know, we're trying to make a bathing type area at the beach, not necessarily a swimming, you know, if somebody's going to swim, they're going to run into weeds. So if they're going anywhere. So just an area where the kids can splash around and play.
Well, we want that dock out there, right? That was very important in the last budget that.
Yeah.
Want to make sure that that dock is put back out there. Kids would love that thing.
Yeah. Yeah, we did put that $1,000 back in for the dock.
Well, actually, any other, anything else, questions? This is very helpful coming up and having you just kind of, because the biggest thing was, the dessert I had was about the depth. But if we start with the weed, start with that, the hydro raking, and see how that, that'll be a big help to eliminate the thick weeds, because I know this past summer, my little boat that's outboard literally got stopped in the weeds. I had to, I back into my slip down there, and I had to go out and back in, out, back in, like three times to get through.
So when would this happen? When would this take place? Before the boats are in there?
Well, the way we applied for the permit, we, because of the way the fish spawn, spawning seasons, we have a window of about two weeks, the end of June, beginning of July.
Ooh, so the boats are there.
How do you do that with all the boats?
I talked to the company, we can do it. But now, Misha and I were talking beforehand, it sounds like some fisheries biologist might have some concern with the timetable, and I said, that's fine, because that's the worst time of year for us anyway, so.
But you can't do it in the fall, because it's too late for this year. Can you do it?
We need the material up.
Just throw the boats over to Dina's dock and do it.
Yeah, that's, that's the tricky part, is trying to find that balance of not interrupting that public use.
When do they actually start growing? It's hard to tell. Some years, it's be later. If you have a cold spring, if the water's cold already, they don't start up as soon.
Sunlight and temperature. It's, yeah, whenever the ice is out. And then these low water events, so like last year.
That aggravated it more.
Yeah, yeah, it did. So it's a whole slew of things we need to try to balance. And the fisheries biologist just let me know today, commented on the project that he'd like the hydro raking to not occur before June 30th. So I will be working with him on, fisheries biologists, they, their primary concern are fisheries. So they're in the Fish and Wildlife Department, and I'm with the D E C. And the D E C has the, you know, the permitting authority for these types of projects. And I have to weigh the overall public good. So that includes things like weighing impacts to, non-target impacts, potentially to fisheries, but then also weighing that to public use of that area. So it's trying to.
Find the balance.
Find that balance, which can be difficult sometimes. But given his comments I just received today, I'll all.
Knowing some of the history down there, it starts to get bad more in July and August. So that June 30th may not be as bad as what people think, because I've been down.
They don't think it's the Fourth of July. Do you want to have that tied up?
Well, no, 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 no. I'm saying if you did it after the Fourth, you know, because you're done with the Canadian holiday by then. Because they come down, a lot come down for July 1st or Dominion Day, whatever. But if you go into, say, mid-July, something, I'm just thinking of how they grow and things like that. And, I mean, it may work out, you know, we just have to coordinate with all the people down there. But I'm just saying, because knowing that over the last 10 years of like history, whatever, it doesn't really get bad till like the middle of, end of July, the end of July into August, September.
Yep, yep.
So that's a four-day project.
So this is going to ask you.
Four-day project, okay.
So we'll have to disrupt all those boats for four days, haven't we?
Well, the boats that are there, I don't think are going to be an issue because the plants don't grow underneath the boats because they're shaded. So, and with the arm, you know, they can get pretty close without, you know, having, we don't have to necessarily move boats out. You know, the issues I'm concerned with is transient traffic, you know, boats coming in, retrieving, launching. You know, we have this equipment out there or this sediment curtain out there. We want to make sure that everybody still has full use, there's as much use as we can provide, all this work going on.
It's four days during the week. It's better than four, better than two days on a weekend when it's sunny and you got all. Okay. Anything, anything else from you?
That's a nice subject, anyway.
Great. You've been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Much-needed project.
Much-needed and very.
Yeah, if you have any other future questions, yeah, please feel free to get us up to you.
Great, okay. Thanks, Misha. Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a very wonderful year.
Travels.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, roads are probably.
Yeah, the roads are starting to get a little bad.
All right. The next one is Andy Capella, boat user, washing fee certificates, update on current parking. So Andy.
So I'll just continue with the aquatic species control. And I think we've touched on all of this for the most part at this point, except for the washing certificates and the user certificates and the greeter program, I guess. So I gave you a memo with the project as a whole and what we'd like to do. And the greeter program being one piece of that, looking for a grant now to help with the greeter and with the rest of this as well. And the greeter is a person down at the dock that would inspect boats, wash boats, trailers as needed.
Like what they have at the, they need, they have somebody that sits there all day.
Yeah, yeah. Most other launches, state launches have somebody there.
Yeah, we used to have Strawberry Acres, so Strawberry, yeah, for years ago, I remember that.
And then it moved over here. And then we hadn't had it for a few years, and now we're looking to bring it back.
Yeah, it moved over here because.
Well, I was funding it.
No, it was funded, no, it was funded by Derby, Newport, and Newport Town. But then Newport Town and Derby decided not to fund it. And so, and our manpower, we felt should be at the dock here.
The state is also, they have four decontamination units, they call them, which is, they're essentially hot water, high-pressure washing units, pressure washers essentially that'll beat the trailer. And they, they've been talking to me about possibly leaving their trailer here at the dock where they may use it to go out to Strawberry Acres for a day, or go to South Bay for a day, or maybe go to Salem for a day, but use.
I know Strawberry.
Did we have use of it while it was here?
We, we don't need it. We have our own.
Oh, we have our own, okay.
But it gives us, you know, highly qualified personnel.
Yeah, sure.
Right, right there. So, and that's still in the works, but Newport is certainly on their, on their list.
Yeah, Lake Strawberry Acres is used pretty extensively because that's where we launch our brothers' boat. There's always a bunch of boats over there.
And the launch there, like Paul said earlier, is a little, it's more steep. So it's easier for us to launch there. So we'd also, we've been doing a user certificate and washing certificate program at the dock for years since I've been here, with little knowledge of why. You know, we know that it satisfies this, the ordinance on the Canadian side of the lake. We've been meeting with the steering committee, a member of Agog Steering Committee that encompasses all the towns from both sides of the border that surround the lake. And this is, I've worked closely with Member Agog, M R C, to kind of borrow their program and implement it here on a voluntary basis. Theirs is backed by a bylaw. I did get a copy of the bylaw. It's in French. I don't understand it at this point. Theirs is backed by a bylaw, um, I did get a copy of the bylaw, it's in French, I, I don't understand it at this point. Um, and I've been talking to the state about ordinances and what that means and, and because as part of this, there's, you know, on the Canadian side, there's an enforcement piece to this, which we, we don't wanna get involved with at this point, we're not ready for that. Uh, the state is considering a sticker program and an, and an ordinance, um, to manage this, so, which would leave us just to follow what, what, what they present.
Yeah, because I know, I asked about the state going to, we couldn't create our own ordinance for the lake, it would have to be a state law, cause I asked about that years ago.
Cause the state-
Cause the Canadian government passed an ordinance, a, a law basically up on the Canadian side that you can't even put a, a dinghy in basically unless it's washed.
Right, so, yeah, we wanna implement the same, the same system, the same program that they use there, but on a voluntary basis here. Now, if they cross the border, um, and they have this certificate that we've given them, it's then, it, it, it will be accepted on the Canadian side. And that's something I checked with them to make sure, we don't wanna, we wanna make sure-
Cause they've been accepted.
Yes.
Cause I know, um, if you do go on the Canadian side and you don't have one of these, then you get pulled over, they want your credit card on the spot with a fine. Cause I was on a boat once that didn't have a sticker and they wanted to find them on the spot. Yeah, that's, it's law out there.
They're a lot more serious about-
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, water, water quality.
Well, I think we should be too, I mean, it's pretty important, I know you keep hearing about Champlain all the time, but I think Member of Agog is equally as important as Champlain, but you can't get the people in Montreal to believe that.
Well, now with the, with the Starry Stone Ward, um, you know, people are starting to take notice here and, um, you know, these, these types of programs help prevent the spread of those, those, um-
The problem isn't to play devil's advocate, it's that voluntary, so if you've got one guy that washes and the next guy that doesn't, you're really having a tough conversation.
One way around that is a lot of the fishermen will go over the border, so, and you're trying to get the fishermen coming in, um, more than the local, you know, um, and if you explain to them that, well, if you go over the border and you get pulled over, I forget what the fine is, it was like five hundred dollars or something, it's quite a hefty fine.
That's Canadian.
Canadian, well, Canadian, well, the US is huge. But no, that's the way, that's the way I know in the past when we were doing the washing down at the dock here, they would explain to people that if you go over the border, you're gonna need this certificate, because if you get pulled over, there is a fine up there.
Do, do we charge for the, for the washing?
Um, we charge a five-dollar donation that we asked for, now I think we made it a five-dollar mandatory, um, because we're gonna need to help pay for this greeter person who, that in my vision, I see the greeter, the person that handles this type of, of the washing certificate.
Their own rates.
Yes, yeah.
Brings a point where for, I think we should charge, well, I think we should be doing it for free, but you're gonna see probably more traffic with Strawberry Acres, uh, to avoid that five-dollar fee, which is big, that's why I think we need to get the other communities involved and see if they can get Newport Center should be, you know, working on air rent to do the same thing we're doing.
And that's something I've, I have, um, considered too, um, and I've been talking to Member of Agog Watershed about that, um, as well. And I, I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily something that a representative from the city should be doing. I think it's better if that comes from somebody from Member of Agog Watershed Association where they go to the neighboring towns and I'd be happy to, to go and support that. Um, but I think it's better if it comes from a lake association, as opposed to a municipality that's-
Yeah, cause the Derby have, has John's River, is that, is that the only access there?
It is.
I think that's the only one, and that's kind of a-
So for weeds up there.
Yeah, you can't pull anything in there, I couldn't believe that one up there last year.
And, and it is voluntary, but what, what we are doing is we're educating the public too, you know.
It's a start, I agree, it's a, it's a good start.
So it started, the big push for the washing, that's when the zebra mussels came in the Champlain. And that's where the Canadian government passed these strict ordinances, it wasn't so much for the milfoil, it was when the zebra mussels came in, cause they didn't want zebra mussels in this lake.
That's back thirty years ago when I was on a council, that's when we had the one over at Strawberry Acres. So it's been going on for a while.
So, um, so yeah, until the state comes up with an ordinance, um, I don't, I don't wanna go there and, and I talk to the state and they don't, they don't want us to go there either, so.
We can't legally.
Um, so yeah, greeter program, the user certificates and washing certificates, reinvigorate our washing station down there. Um, hydro rake and then the hand-polling is our, is our plan to attack aquatic nuisance.
It does upset me a little bit that they expect us to contribute to the theme of Lake Champlain, but they're not willing to go forward on a mandatory wash, washing.
Well, they're, well, right now they're debating how to pay for it, oh, in Montreal, and Champlain is the one that was focused on by the EPA. It's the top priority right now unfortunately.
I know, I know, but this is just a small step that would make a huge difference in some of the issues that we're dealing with.
Right.
Um, so if there's, I don't know if there's any questions on this that stands at this point.
At least there's a plan and right, actually, we have to do something.
Yeah, it's been a long time coming, Misha and I have been talking for two years now trying to figure this out, so it's nice that we have something solid to-
We've almost hit the point where that's not usable anymore, the dock down there, so we really don't have to do something, it's a beautiful piece of real estate.
So, um, the other, um, item on, on the agenda for, for me while I'm here is, um, to, to ask permission to remove, uh, two buildings at Gardner Park, the snack bar, um, located behind Field One, and then the, uh, press, uh, slash storage building behind the, the Gary Rowell Youth Field. And, um, I just didn't feel comfortable taking them back and putting up first, talking to you guys, so.
As far as where the backstop is at, so-called press box, are you gonna put something else up to, so the traffic won't interfere, you know, like a backstop, some kind of a wooden backstop behind a fence, it's behind the, the steel fence?
So, uh, I'm, I'm confused, so there's the ball field, there's the fence, and there's a building?
There's a building, but that building also acts kind of like a shield from the traffic.
Like a visual?
Visual, well, not only visual, but, but also, I think, I think it would be that close to the road, uh, it would be nice to have some kind of a backstop, you know, a solid backstop to replace that.
Which field are you talking about?
I'm talking about the, the Gary Rowell, the Gary Rowell field.
Okay.
Yeah, the youth field, where that building is, they're gonna be tearing down, which is all rotten.
Right.
Yeah, that was rotten when I was coaching twenty-five years ago, so I'm surprised it's still standing.
Uh, we could put something there, I don't, I don't necessarily think it'd be, it's a safety concern.
Not only safety, I'm just thinking for visual, we could even put like that green stuff that we have, that green fencing that we did here, I think it would act-
Help the outfielders pick up the ball.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay, yeah, I see, I see that, and we have the green fencing.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's not, it's not something that's gonna cost a lot of money, we already, we already have it, and-
So, on the map here, I call it the map just to-
Yeah, I'm talking about this building here, they take it down that old shack, and just on that, on the high fence, put a, put that green mat. So that way when the-
Ooh, maps helps.
Oh, definitely does. Cause I can see the ball not be, it could come in at you, you know, you know.
Yep, yep, tough to see, yep.
Tough to see with, cause that backstop, that building actually acted as a backstop.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, there is a high fence in front of it, I think we cover that high fence with a, with a green mat.
I see what you're saying, yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
So we're taking them down, anything in their place?
Um, well, actually, um, Jay Ansel and I met earlier today, uh, looking at building the addition on the, the skate shack, um, to have a snack bar there, uh, which would then take the place of, of the, um, snack bar and the press box there. Um, at the Gary Rowell Youth Field, we don't have any plans at this point to replace it, but I'm, I'm sure that something will be coming down the pipe soon, um, from the youth, youth league.
Yeah, cause it hasn't been used for quite a while, I understand.
They, they use it, you know, very limitedly, and there is some stuff in there that was probably there.
Probably the most stuff I put in.
It's gonna be rotten.
It probably is, the building was in rough shape then, we didn't hardly dare use the press box, it was a little shaky.
Right, it's, they're ready to go, those buildings are tired and they're ready, but-
Yeah, especially, I, I went and looked with Andy and looked at the, at the snack bar and I didn't realize how rough it was.
So let's talk money, we always have to talk money, do you have it?
So last time, um, when we were doing the budget, we talked about this and we talked about using, uh, the thirty-seven-five that's in the current budget.
That was the grant, matching grant money?
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously, like to get some, who's gonna do the, the designing for you or whatever, but you're gonna need-
Uh, well, Jay's, um, Jay's gonna be working on a design.
I agree.
And part of that will-
Be sort of a feasibility, you do just sketches, get some estimates, then you can decide.
Yeah.
And then we'll go out to bed, right?
Yeah, please walk together, yeah.
And, you know, this is something that we're gonna do soon.
Have you had a chance, oh yeah, you wouldn't be able to do it through school then?
No, we wouldn't do it through school because of the, the timing and, you know, right, okay.
Let's see if we can get local contractors to-
Yeah.
Well, this is the time that they're looking forward now for spring, so.
Good idea, yeah.
This is definitely the time to go out to bed if you've got, if maybe, you know, if we don't have enough money, maybe Karen can help us. I see she's smiling over there.
Oh, look, anything, anything else then for Andy?
No, no.
You, you need a motion?
Do we need any type of motion?
If you, I can make a motion that we allow-
We've already discussed this once.
Yeah.
Well, we kinda left that thirty-seven-five hanging though, we had definitely made our mind that that's where it could be allocated for, but, I mean, it was designated for Gardner Park, so probably don't need a motion.
I think it's labeled Gardner Park improvements.
Yeah, okay.
All right, get her done.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Andy.
The next item on the agenda, um, needs to be, that's trail lane road status, dug space, that needs to be tabled until the, I think the calendar's open. It's over there, February twenty-seventh. So we need a motion to table item number six to February twenty-seventh.
I will make a motion that we table item number six until February twenty-seventh.
Motion made by Mr. Robert, sir, second, second by Mr. Vincent, discussion, here I am, I'll never say I, I'll close, I just have it, okay. Next item, Main Street parking and municipal lot review and recommendation, Chief DeSanto.
Good evening.
Hey, don't worry.
So, for some time, uh, the police department and members of the public have been dealing with the pedestrian traffic issues specifically here on Main Street and pedestrian safety, so Sergeant Bingham and I went out this week and, uh, we're doing some research in Title twenty-three, which I brought along here with me tonight and absolutely no one is allowed to make fun of my drawings, I am not an artist by any stretch of the imagination, but you get the idea.
Did you have to scale?
This is, I was just gonna say, this is not to scale, however. Uh, so this crudely represents what we have going on out here in Main Street, okay? I don't know who painted the lines, I believe it was the state. To me personally, it's irrelevant who painted the lines, I'm just telling you that the way that they're currently painted violates Title twenty-three. So what Title twenty-three says is, you have to have twenty feet from the end of the crosswalk, I'm shaking a little bit, sorry, the end of the crosswalk there to the first available place to park, okay? So this first, uh, parking space is only fourteen feet from the end of the crosswalk. The second parking space, uh, I'm sorry, let me back up, so the second part of, uh, Title twenty-three says that you must have a minimum of six feet of parking on either side of a fire hydrant. Our city, uh, ordinance, uh, increased that to ten feet, which I'm sure Chief Leclerc likes. Um, so effectively, what would happen is, is that these first two parking spaces in front of the library would be eliminated. This parking space on the opposite side of Second Street would be eliminated, please don't take a picture of my drawing. That's just embarrassing, I'll say to the kids from the elementary school, have a lesson. This parking space here, maybe I should use a different finger, this parking space here, uh, which is on the corner of Central Street, so this is where the UPS store would be, this is actually a handicap parking space, this again is only fourteen feet from this crosswalk, so that space would need to be eliminated as well. And then these spaces here, this is only six feet from the crosswalk, so this one would be eliminated. This one is only three feet from the fire hydrant, so that would be eliminated. So essentially, you would lose one, two, three, four, five parking spaces on Main Street. So, looking at already having a bunch of downtown parking, sorry, uh, doing, having as many downtown parking issues as we already have, I went down the street and contacted every business owner to let them know I was gonna be discussing this tonight. Most of them didn't seem to have, uh, an issue with the fact that, first of all, the law states what it states and there's not a whole lot that we can do about that. I did talk to Tom Bernier about what we could do at present and really, there isn't a whole lot we can do given the weather conditions. We can't pound, um, we can't put new signs in because we can't dig through the frost, uh, to put signage up and obviously paint is, it's not the time of year to paint the roadways, so this stuff can be rectified come spring.
Do you think it's not urgent?
That we comply with state law?
Well, we, we haven't been for, forever, so.
Yep.
It gets frozen out there, yeah.
So, that is a decision for the council to make, I will tell you that if someone gets hit in one of these crosswalks, now that I've made this presentation, the very first thing they'll say is the city knew that this was only fourteen feet and it should have been twenty and the person coming down the road this way would have seen me if it had been twenty feet, or at least an argue, a lawyer would argue that. Um, so that would be my first concern if we don't do anything. Same thing.
Right.
Traffic, uh, going both directions there. So, and the fire hydrant out at this end, that's a no-brainer, that has to be taken care of, otherwise, we're not gonna be able to, uh, fight fires. So, what can we do, we, you know, we're losing five spaces on Main Street for merchant parking, yes, sir.
You're losing five on that block?
Yes, sir.
Go up a little further, it's still downtown, isn't it?
Yes, but it is.
So, we go one spot for UPS with their little sign, that's not twenty feet in the corner, is it?
I believe it is. The problem, yeah, the, the problem was is that the day that Sergeant Bingham and I went out there, uh, DPW was unable to plow every spot on Main Street, so I couldn't measure each individual one.
And then come across the street where you're parking in front of Needleman's and that?
Yep.
That parking spot where, where your finger is?
Yep.
There's not twenty feet in the corner there?
But there's no crosswalk there.
Oh, so it's only where the crosswalk is?
It is the one with the lower crosswalk in front of the bank, we are, no, at the other end, is, is that, are we okay there?
Yes.
We are, yes.
Okay.
So that handicap that you took out, Chief, does that next space then default to handicap?
That would be my suggestion.
Absolutely, we would.
Absolutely. Um, so now, we, if, if, if we go this route, what are we gonna do about, uh, losing five additional spaces on Main Street? This will not make me very popular amongst my coworkers, however, my suggestion to the council would be to make this municipal lot out here, the entire lot, two-hour parking, nine to five Monday through Friday, all employees of the municipal building, i.e. city employees, would have to park down in the Main Street lot, which should open up somewhere between nine and twelve spaces.
I'm gonna be cynical now, when the court's in session, there are people who park out there all day and don't get tickets.
Yeah.
I think we need to enforce and make the court system, we've been trying to tell those people on jury draw days, they should park down by the gateway. But they don't, they tie up all these spaces.
Yeah.
Even, um, I've seen, I hate to say, police vehicles park all day, state police, I guess when court's in session.
We had that discussion, um, at our city, our department head meeting this week. Additional things that the city hasn't done, but other people have done, is there's a parking lot that opened up on the backside of where the old sheriff's department used to be for court staff parking, that seems to alleviated some of the issues. I think if we were to make this two-hour parking for merchant, you know, merchant use out here and, um, enforced it, that would be a start to ease the traffic burden. I mean, ultimately, I think we're all in agreement that we have to do something for additional parking. There were two other ideas that were brought up to me, um, that I will share with the council, I don't have a feeling one way or the other on them. But, the first one I have no feeling one way or the other on. So we have the redevelopment project that sits here on Main Street, one merchant had suggested that we, um, open up the backside where the fence is along the, um, Central Street parking lot and allow parking in a portion of that back there. I understand that we don't own it and that would be some, but is it possible short-term remedy that we could use down the line? Um, the other one, which I was in favor of, um, there's a very, especially in this community, there's a very difficult balance between the law enforcement portion and the chasing of merchants away, right? So, we as the police go down and people come from Canada or outside the city and they wanna, uh, shop on our Main Street and we go do our foot patrol and the car's been there for two hours and fifteen minutes, so we slap a ticket on it and they come back and go, "What the heck, we just ate lunch and spent a hundred and fifty dollars in downtown and now I've got a parking ticket on my car." So, one of the merchants came up with a great idea, which I'm in support of, I wanted to broach it past you, which is to, um, is to create a parking warning form that might have the official city police department seal on it, and I got permission from the Chamber of Commerce to use their logo and put something on it, and this is just off the cuff, but something that said, this is not a ticket, this is a warning, there are a lot of merchants on this street, parking is limited in this city, in the future, please limit your parking to two hours. Hand these ticket books out to the store owners on Main Street, and allow them to issue some of these warnings, along with the police department doing their warnings on foot patrol, in a hope to help alleviate that without chasing the merchants away for finding them.
I've witnessed it numerous times, merchants parking in front of their own establishment.
Mm-hmm. And that's, again, where.
You know, we gotta kind of educate the merchants that if you want people coming into your store, you should park over here or down Central Street, where there is public parking down there, too.
Yep. So, again, I think it's a combination of enforcement, it's a combination of education, and, you know, and that's on us, to do that with the business merchants and the downtown shoppers. But I can tell you right now that this is a law issue, and I'm just looking for some direction to work with Tom in the spring as to, I think, the easiest way to solve this is to simply, for example, this first parking space, we would, where's my camera guy? I'm about to draw some more, you wanna get a picture? So, right now, we have a parking space that goes fourteen feet, so we would cut this back. And it would be the striped lines like you see out there now, that's pretty good, too, by the way. We would cut that back, you would lose the first space, it's probably going to realistically do more like twenty or twenty-five feet, but that would alleviate having to essentially erase every single one of these lines, and, you know, the possibility exists that, yeah, we might end up with one more space down in there, but for the amount of cost and time for DPW to go and repaint all those, I don't necessarily know if it would be worth it in my personal opinion, but that's.
You're gonna do that on both sides of that crosswalk?
Yeah, you would see, exactly, you would see this come back twenty feet, here, 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 and here.
So you said a total of five spaces?
Yep, two here in front of the library, one on the cross the street on the corner of Second Main.
Three, four, five.
Three, uh, four.
So eliminating the one, which is the issue of Second and Main, that will, not Second and Main, um, Field and Main, that will certainly help with the visibility issue.
Well, yeah, see.
Come up and try to make a left off Field down Main.
It's definitely gonna help with vehicular traffic, absolutely.
Yeah.
The issue that we looked at it, or the perspective that we looked at it from, was what can we do to increase pedestrian safety?
Right, that too.
Like, you're absolutely right, especially on that corner, to have that set back all the way to here and be able to turn out of there will be a lack of.
Well, I was just thinking, sitting here, we're looking at that, that's gonna be another added benefit.
So, in the current, the city manager forwarded you the current city ordinance on parking, section ninety-four, and it currently states in section A, parking or standing, parking or standing is prohibited at all of the following locations and times, and then it goes down through, and specifically, number three, is ten feet from any fire hydrant. So, the proposal that I had typed up to make things very easy was, can I borrow your?
Sure.
Parking or standing is prohibited pursuant to all rules of Vermont Title twenty-three and that of the locations at the following times, so that we can fall in line with section eleven oh four, which states within six feet of a fire hydrant, again, we're at ten feet, so we can increase it, we just can't decrease it, and within twenty feet of a crosswalk and an intersection. So, again, I'm trying to think if we have any crosswalks on Main Street that aren't at intersections, but not in the downtown, immediate downtown, so it's irrelevant.
So how do we end up with it that way? I mean, just overlooked it?
I don't know.
I mean, wasn't aware?
Well, when the state, we did Main Street, they did all the painting.
We think the engineers would know that.
They would, because the state came, remember, the state came in a few years ago and paved, they were paving at night, they redid all that, that's all part of the big push from up there up to Derby. The other ones that came in and painted, I believe, after that was done.
And they may have done it based on what the old spaces were, I don't know.
Yes.
What is a requirement for the state on the parks, as far as, are there any crosswalks?
Twenty feet, I think.
Twenty feet? No, 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 no. How many crosswalks do you need?
Oh, I have no idea.
Okay, if, if, it's not a requirement, eliminate the crosswalk down there by Central Street, okay? This intersection has a crosswalk on both sides, eliminate that crosswalk to this, this side, because it has a crosswalk to go across each way, and you don't have to move any damn thing.
Yep. This one here, you would still have to, there's a moving, oh, I see, you're saying take the crosswalk out?
Take it out, because you've got crosswalks across there, you have one on this side, so you eliminate, you don't have to do anything.
Uh, that would take care of this, yes, this right here, the only way to cross the street for anybody.
No, no, I'm saying eliminate that crosswalk period.
This one here?
Yeah.
The only way to do that would be then, if everybody that parked on this side would have to walk either all the way up here or all the way down to the state.
Or they walk like they normally do, they don't pay attention to your crosswalk.
Well, that's definitely not safe.
We're not gonna, I don't, I'm not favorable in crosswalks, I think this is.
No, actually, the one down below is what I'm saying.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, so no, I think what we have there, we just, I like this proposal.
Well, let's listen, we have a merchant here, so.
Yeah, you say about, you know, merchant parking in front of their business, my car parks up in this parking lot, do you know how many times my car has been rammed? Two-by-four right through the back of it? I mean, you know, pickup truck put the ball right through my front bumper, you, you know, and I don't drive a car that's cheap, so where do you want me to park at?
On the roof?
To protect it from the idiots that drive, you know, and the police, you go to them, their hands are tied, they have no cameras on this parking lot. My state park keeps saying to me, how many times your car getting hit up there? I said, come to the municipal parking and watch the court people when they leave court and they're pissed. Or, they're not good drivers, period, and they slide into a spot, you know, I mean, state park keep telling me, you can't get any more of these. I gotta park somewhere. And we used to bring two vehicles in the beginning, now we only bring one to work, and it's still getting hit. Come on. So that's why we park on, on the main drive, because you're less likely to be hit there than you are in this parking lot.
Well, I, I understand that, but then we've heard from merchants who said that we don't have enough parking, you know, so it's a catch.
We never did. Yeah.
Right, so it's a catch twenty-two.
Yeah.
Do you leave your space open in front of the business for people to come and shop on Main Street?
Are you gonna have any businesses on Main Street?
No, it's coming in.
You're saying you're gonna agree to eliminate all those parking spots?
Well, that's just my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the council.
Well, if you wanna keep that one down there, then you're losing two spots.
Right.
If you keep, if you, that one down there, you're gonna lose two spots, right? If you eliminate that one crosswalk to where it's on this side of that, no, back up, to where it's on this side of the intersection, which it is, you're only losing two spots, and you still have your crosswalks. You know what I mean?
Yeah, you're saying that because you would eliminate this.
Right, eliminate that crosswalk, use it on that side of the intersection, so you're only eliminated two versus five.
You would only lose one spot, because you rid a spot on this side.
Yeah, I was thinking the ten feet, our city ordinance says ten feet from a fire hydrant.
But I think, but knowing the issues we're having with the visibility coming off Field, I think it's key to keep that one there, and if you eliminate one, then eliminate the one right on this side by the courthouse. That'd be the one to eliminate, because we're getting a lot of complaints about people coming off Field Avenue, and with vehicles parking, tall vehicles parking in front of the lot right there, they can't see down Main Street.
I agree with you, it's an issue, and part of the problem is, is that, I mean, our police cars are in and out of that street, you know, a hundred times a day. We have the same issues that other people do.
Because we eliminated the left-hand turn up here to try to make things better, but even, you're farther down here, so it makes it more difficult. Up here, if you made a left, you could still kind of see, but there were other issues.
Now, you say we're losing five, did you measure from the, the spot that we're losing, the, the whole length of the street, to see how many spot act could be fit? Because we do line striping every year anyway, every summer.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
We probably, like you said, I think we probably would be losing maybe only three.
Possible.
Because if you're taking twenty-five feet on both ends, I mean, we may not be losing five if we measure it up and reline it, because we do relining every summer anyway, because the way they're applying the stuff, it only lasts one season. So, it may not be a total of five spots, it may be only two or three.
Yeah.
If you're going to go with the age-friendly designation which we have for new cars, that requires making the streets livable for all of us who live here, that's not just cars.
Sure.
And you want the streets to be safe for people to cross. So if anybody, for example, is handicapped or challenged in any way, hiking all the way up here to cross, if you get rid of that crosswalk, makes no sense whatsoever. If anything, you want more crosswalks, not less.
We watched the other day, this lady with the little shopping cart crossing the one in front of the courthouse.
Mm-hmm.
She was in the middle of a crosswalk, and this young girl in a dark sedan come flying through, that little lady ran, and I was impressed, she got out of the way of the car. And I was like, so it's not that you can't see, they don't slow down on Main Street.
Right.
It's bad, you know? Yep. And that girl just beeped her horn, did one of these, and kept rolling.
I mean, it was, it was poked.
Yeah.
Another foot, she would have hit it.
Yeah.
So, okay.
My preference would be to wait till spring, measure this out, see how many spaces we're gonna lose before I make a decision.
Well, we have to wait till spring anyway.
Well, yeah.
Right, right, you know, this just gets people thinking.
No, that's, yeah.
But I think, I agree with Seth, we need to go with the state.
Well, you can't.
You have to follow the state law.
Until spring, because we all know this crosswalk is dangerous, we have all seen people nearly get hit.
And I, I agree with you, Pam, I just, what can we do at this point in juncture in the year? We can't put paint on the roads, it's not gonna stick in the temperatures, and we can't dig and put the signs in to say no.
You could block off those parking spots. You decided to drop the liability if somebody gets.
Then you get the fog truck.
Yeah.
Lot of snow in there, that'll work.
They do.
That's a no-win situation, I'm like, I'll do whatever you guys tell me to do, I'll leave it up, leave it up.
But you mentioned two-hour parking in the municipal, what am I supposed to, run out every two hours and find a new spot if I can and move my car? I'm there eight hours, eight and a half.
Yeah, and I would say, and, again, don't throw stones at a glass house, I'm just making a suggestion.
I don't, no.
As a business owner, I would be parking down in the Main Street lot, and that way you've opened up a potential another spot for a merchant here on, in the municipal lot. I know it's an issue, I know it's something that we already got to give a handle on, but without a couple million dollars to do something out of parking.
They ruined thirty-five years' laws.
Exactly, these are all high-tech.
I used to work on Main Street back in the seventies, I worked for Montgomery Ward and for Schuster, Blackstone, but we had to park down here.
Yeah.
And even then, but then you had parking meters, and you had to come out and keep feeding the deer.
No, not, not the lower parking.
Oh, not the lower one?
Well, that's where the employees had to park. If you got caught parking on Main Street, you were written up by the management.
And again, that's that balance that we're trying to find, I mean, it's not, if we're out there doing the foot patrols, to sit there and issue tickets takes us another five seconds per car, but it's, like I said, when you're a merchant and, you know, nobody likes to come out and see a parking ticket on their car after they just spent a bunch of money on Main Street, and we don't wanna be.
Even if you didn't spend any money on it?
Yeah, it's, it's disappointing, absolutely.
Right.
So, my personal opinion is, I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight, I first wanna see in the spring what kind of space we have to work with, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, okay.
I realize we have to go with the state statutes, but maybe it won't be as painful as we think.
This gets everybody thinking, nice presentation, Mr. Wilson.
But, even if you do, why can't we be told now, how many parking spots can be in there? It's just a case of going down and here's your twenty feet, and then how many parking spots we'll have, because there's two handicaps down there.
Yep.
Because, once we make a decision, it takes sixty days before an ordinance can go into effect if I'm.
That's correct.
My old age hasn't lost my memory.
I agree with that, but in my personal opinion.
But if we wait till May, June, we're gonna do, we're gone through the whole summer without it.
Right. In my personal opinion, because they're currently in violation of state law, I would say we don't need to wait the sixty days. I'm sure some attorney somewhere would argue that, but we're doing it for purposes of public safety.
We did talk about it, and is it a forty-four date?
You got forty-four days to appeal.
Yeah.
Citizen, they gotta get a petition with five percent of the vote in the city to appeal it. That goes to a citywide vote.
But that's to eliminate the sixty-day waiting?
No, that's to, that's to.
But if we, if we're in violation of state statute.
That would be my argument.
Does that eliminate that sixty-day waiting? That's the question we probably should ask.
That's why we have a lawyer, yeah?
Well, the LCT is a lot cheaper than a lawyer.
Yeah.
If you're gonna add that to a city ordinance, you gotta wait sixty days. If you're not gonna change the ordinance, you're gonna report to the state statute.
Tom, what's the earliest, realistically, that we could start painting and pounding signs?
Depends on Mother Nature.
Not after, is it May?
May.
May? So if we waited a couple of weeks, or even a nice warm day where we can get out, and the people park everywhere, I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm not, I'm not a road foreman, I'm not a engineer.
Passing this ordinance, you've got nothing to do with how many spots you're gonna have. You've gotta comply with state statute. It doesn't make any difference how many parking space you get in there, you've got to comply with the statute, so it doesn't make any difference.
That's a valid point.
You're waiting or not.
We can redo it, to get the maximum number of parking spaces, good point, yeah.
If you pass that ordinance now, it doesn't take effect until the first April, it's almost time to start the road to be cleared.
They're thinking about it anyway, yeah, that's a valid point.
The longer you wait, the further in the John's right, the further in the somebody got before you can do anything, if you add it to the statute. I mean, the ordinance.
Yeah.
Is there an ordinance setting the number of parking spaces on Main Street?
No, but they're saying complying with federal.
I understand that, but if they, I'm just trying to understand if there's any reason, for example, if this were August third, you couldn't go out on August fourth and paint and change the whole structure. If there's no, if it's not a question of changing an ordinance, that, the only ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, you're talking about is changing the length of time people can park in this lot?
Anything else? Everybody else set here and then? Okay, so we'll just kind of hold off.
Check the V L C T, meanwhile.
Check the V L C T.
I don't see any advantage to that at all, there's no, you're gonna have to comply with it.
Right, well, we know that, we gotta comply with the state, but we can't pound stuff signs in right now.
Bust us the Walmart parking lot to go out of space.
We'd just like to get the hard numbers of how many parking spaces we're gonna lose, I realize we can't change that, but let's get a handle on that first, and it's gotta be done, I understand that, but.
All I'm saying is, we, you know, the ordinance isn't gonna change the amount of parking spaces.
No, it is now.
It's got nothing to do with it. You have to comply with that, with that statute.
We haven't been.
Well, first time somebody gets killed, you will, I can tell you that.
You probably got somebody.
Well, that would blind, that would blindside us, because, so.
And to comply with the ordinance, you have to get with Tom, I guess, figure out how you can back those four corners off, but I'm telling you, you're gonna have to block it off, because people have been parking there, and they're, they're gonna park.
Yeah, I would say that, that would be an area where we would do immediate enforcement. I mean, if you're gonna park over the straight parking lanes, and the sign says no parking in this area, and you do it anyway, it'll mess.
Right, okay.
But what do we need to get, so we need to change the ordinance basically for the parking here?
In this lot, if you choose to.
Yeah. Well, we need to do something to accommodate for what we're gonna, we may be losing.
I agree, unless you want to wait on this two-hour lot to find out how many spaces you're actually going to lose on Main Street. going to lose on Main Street.
But it's, it's like, you know what I'm saying, it's not, it's irrelevant. Well, we're going to lose.
Yeah, I agree.
We, we know we're going to lose.
Because you're just modifying this to put in Title twenty-three.
That's all I've done here.
That's all you're doing.
But Mr. Roberts is correct in the fact that I did omit to change, I guess I would have to change the parking ordinance for the lot.
For the lot of the end.
To, to get a whole lot to be two-hour parking and an overnight parking pursuant to the winter parking ban. You're right.
Is that in this order? Is that in this order?
No. I thought it was. I think it's...
Yeah, it's not in there. Yeah, the twenty-foot's not in there.
I don't think it's in there.
I've read it five times.
So, I had...
So there, aren't there some spaces that are two hours already?
Yeah, out here.
Right out here.
Some are two, some are one.
Some are different, there's, okay, so it's, so it's all different now, so you could just add a few more down the line if you wanted.
Got one or two.
City-owned or leased parking lots, as posted by signs, you have some flexibility.
So I, I think, I think the manager's right, there's some flexibility there in the sense that number forty-two states, city-owned or leased parking lots as posted by signs.
So, so we don't really do anything?
Change the sign.
We don't need to do anything.
Well, we do have to do this. We have to change the ordinance to add Title twenty-three, which is the state required. We have to change the ordinance.
You don't have to change forty-two.
Right.
You have to focus.
Well, this is something he added in.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we have to vote on the ordinance, vote to approve this change here.
This is changed in New Orleans. Okay. I thought that was already part of the...
No, that, no, it's not. That's not...
That's an update.
I was confused.
Oh, okay. So that's what we have.
That was my copy, how you want it?
No, this is mine, I gave it to Seth, I didn't know what was...
I gave mine, I just gave mine away. I just gave mine away. I had it. I just gave it to Seth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gave it back to Steve.
It looks like that.
I got it.
Andy and Giber?
Wine response.
I got it, yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would make a motion that we allow the city to alter the parking spaces on Main Street so that we're in compliance with the state section, I'm sorry, just a minute, Title twenty-three.
DSA.
While still maintaining the maximum amount of parking spaces allowed.
So that's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion on that?
Well, that wasn't my table, that one's a lot.
Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, the ayes have it. Motion carries.
Two.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. The next item is coin drop schedule. And we have it here. This is usually first come, first served by letter, people requests. And we have the D A V on May twenty-seventh, Saturday, eight AM to two PM. Parks and Rec, Newport Parks and Rec, June tenth, eight AM to two PM. The Fire Department, July first, eight AM to two PM. American Legion Post twenty-one, August twelfth, same time, eight AM, two PM. The V F W, um, auxiliary, Post seven ninety-eight and Auxiliary, September ninth, eight AM to two PM. Soapbox Derby, October fourteenth, eight AM to two PM. And the D A V again, November eleventh, Saturday, eight AM to two PM. That is the proposed coin drop schedule.
Didn't somebody from Children's Miracle Network want to do one too?
They stopped in and I gave them the copy of the policy and...
You, you didn't hear back?
Yeah.
I don't know if they realized it was a timeline or not. Okay.
Is there deadlines for them to apply?
January thirty-first.
January thirty-first.
Okay.
And you can only take seven anyway.
Right, we can only have this now.
Okay, yeah, no doubt, yes.
So what happens if somebody worthy of a coin drop applies? Do we eliminate a duplicate here or...
It's first come, first served, basically, and they're, the requests are received in the manager's office.
Oh, first come, first served in the year, okay.
All right. And, but we reserve...
Massive seven.
But we reserve the rec and the fire department. Those are the ones we reserve, right?
The rec always gets June for the fireworks and fire department always has July.
July.
And the V F W always has June.
Yeah.
The V, D A V.
D A V, yeah. V F W has one, D A V has the other.
Yeah.
You have two D A Vs.
Yeah. Two C D V, D A V, you know, there's much.
Yeah.
First and last.
Oh.
Oh, they get, they get...
I don't know if you're spelling that out, it's right, I do it.
Give me a break.
Okay. All right, so anything on the coin drop schedule? Then you would need, you would need a motion to approve the coin drop schedule.
So...
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion on that? Now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, the ayes have it, motion carries.
We're almost in overtime, so...
Not really.
No, okay.
We're okay. Yeah, we're doing all right. Um, the next is to open the Vermont Housing Conservation Board Planning Grant RFP bids. And Laura will give me the bids. These, normally we, normally the mayor just comes in and opens them in the presence of the manager and whatever, but they require these bids to be opened up at the council meeting here. We have some different requirements, so we're going to open up the bids right now. We received, what, four?
Four.
Four bids.
And we need to, I need to keep the on...
You do, don't you?
Nope, I'll just open them up. This is the downtown strategic visibility analysis proposal. This is White and Burke. And I just want to go right to the dollar page. We're at the dollar page here. Because that's the important thing.
I just want to let you know that the procurement policy says that the award should be made to the responsible qualified bidder. This proposal will be most advantageous.
Yes, because we have to do more than just...
Doesn't necessarily have to be the...
But no, but we're just opening up and you're going to record the dollar amount right now. Okay, this is White and Burke, because you're going to compare apples and apples for images or just to make sure that they meet, they actually met the specifications.
After this meeting.
Right. Yeah, no, no, we're just opening them up here. They require them to be opened here.
Got it.
So White and Burke, the total was forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four.
Forty-nine what?
Forty-nine thousand...
Nine what?
Nine fifty-four.
Are we going to get copies of these so we can study them to make sure that...
Well, what I recommend is that, um, we form an interview committee and interview them next week so they can come back on the twenty-seventh and make their recommendation. So I'm hoping while the mayor's opening these, you'll think about going to council to be the most appropriate person to sit on that interview committee.
That's White and Burke.
And I, I would like to get those done next week so that we have time to make a, a report back up to the council on the twenty-seventh.
This is from S K E O Solutions.
Where are they at?
This one's out of Burlington. Um, the other one was out of, White and Burke is out of Burlington also. Okay, right here. Total? Forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. Jesus. Wow. What was the other one?
Um, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four.
Yeah.
Forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three.
Close enough.
Did they all know we had fifty thousand dollars to grant there?
They do, it's certainly the RFP.
Only knew we had fifty.
Yeah.
Let me guess, forty-nine, nine ninety-nine.
The key would be to get there to make sure, you know, and talk to them and interview them.
I think it's the, you do main search or...
The block, if, if, right. It's, uh, planning grant for the hole in the ground.
Oh, that's plans for the hole in the ground, where?
A planning grant.
Planning grant.
This one is from Land Strategies. From Cabot.
We shouldn't have told him how much money we had.
You had to follow the guidelines.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
I don't see a dollar in here.
Free. Free, though.
They do it for nothing, they don't know where we are.
Did they forget to put in?
I think you have forty-nine also, four or less.
Because I recognize, yes, notice, as I opened it up. We're sitting in the audience. Did you put one in here, a page?
I'm on, I'm on his team, I'm sure if anyone, I know he...
Usually it's a sheet.
We're going to redefine that, yeah?
Draw down, skip it.
Because that was a, the, the sheet was identical, right? They all had that to fill out?
We have to redefine that, yeah? Well, if I was going to be free, we'd know who we're taking back.
James, it's not in here.
They're monthly, and I'm like, it's telling you. Yeah, forty, I think it'd be forty thousand, because you had ten months charging four thousand a month.
What page is that on, James?
On the page, it's called cost per poll.
Oh, I was looking for the O, the form that everybody filled out.
It's in a narrative?
Is it a narrative? Okay.
On what's, what paragraph did he entitle his, I see a cost per poll.
Okay.
Right, we'll devote an average of, in a ten-month period for a total of not less than three hundred and twenty hours, we will receive a fixed monthly fee of four thousand dollars, which is a hundred and twenty-five dollars in average.
He gave us that, right?
Yeah.
So it's forty thousand.
Forty thousand? Okay. Houses, uh, the form that everyone else had.
Got it. Thanks, James.
Thank you. Good thing you were here, because I would have been... And the final one is from Brain Associates. Brain, C R A N E, Brain Associates.
I don't know.
That's where I'm going to...
This one's going to be expensive, I got to fancy forward. Like, two-folded.
Windsor, Vermont, it looks like. No, no, those are references. The other ones all had it. Crane, right here, um, Burlington. Burlington, so... Forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and eight cents.
I can't wait to meet these guys. Okay?
So the eight cents.
Do they get, do they know all the people, they know what you bid, or what?
What did you say?
Do they know what the other bids were?
No, no.
No, 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 no.
How the hell we come out that close?
Well, I don't know. Well, we told them how much money we had.
Okay, so...
Well, they knew... So that's part of the bid process.
It was public that we got a fifty thousand dollar grant.
Right. We had to put that into the RFP because it was the brand.
If you get somebody that would do it for twenty-five thousand, that's what you should do.
We're following the procedure.
Following the official procedures.
You got somebody that'll do it for forty.
Yeah.
Who would be willing to sit on the hiring committee? We've got Karen Garrity is willing to sit on the committee from N D A. They're partnering with us on this project. We've got another individual from the Vermont Agency of Commerce, Security and Development named James Dugan, who's going to sit with us, myself, and I'd like to ask somebody...
I'd be happy to.
Would you?
I'd love to.
And we'll, we'll try to do it when you're available?
Sure.
Great. Perfect. And it's going to happen, I hope it's going to happen next week, I'm impressed, everybody.
Next week, Thursday.
Thursday, I'm going to go.
All day.
Thank you.
Good one, it'd be very, I would love to do that.
And you'll report back for the twenty-seven, you read up a whole recommendation for the next...
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
So I guess rather than you getting me copies, that's a waste of money, I'll stop and review those here. There's a lot to fill.
There's, some of these are quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, though.
So the twenty, the, uh, next week, we'll be in touch with our interview committees.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the adoption of the purchasing policy vote and vote. Laura, I'm going to let you give the brief overview of why, of reasoning for the policy.
Yeah. Let me just find it in the material.
Well, I, I have one, but yeah, do you want to use the mayor's? Or we can share.
Yeah, you could use that one, I can share.
I have, I have my files prepared.
We're fine, you can, you can share.
So this is a purchasing policy that I'm recommending for adoption. Uh, this stemmed from an audit that we went through with one of our previous Department of Public Safety grants. We were also recently audited on another grant completely suffered in part, and both auditors found that it would be to our advantage to adopt a purchasing policy. So this policy has been prior approved by that particular auditor, and it takes into consideration all the legal language that we have to have, such as affirmative action and local preference. Um, it has a code of conduct that deals with potential conflict of interest or reasonable disclosure. Talks about what we need to keep for documentation and how many years we need to keep that documentation. It designates purchasing authorities, which are basically the city manager, city treasurer, department heads, and are designees. Talks about, um, it covers incidental purchases, minor purchases, and major purchases, and it talks about protocols if federal funding, funds that are received specifically from grants are used. Talks about a bid process and sealed bid, which is basically what we're going through right here on this particular, the bids that we just opened. And it has specifications for the sealed bid process as well as bid specifications. That's on page three. It also has criteria for bid selection, which is basically what we are talking about going through this, this grant RFP. It includes the bid submissions, the bid openings, the criteria for the bid selection. It, uh, includes the bid submissions, the bid openings, the criteria for the bid selection. Um, if, uh, in the unfortunate circumstance, you go through your bid process and you realize you have to make a change. But it has, um, criteria to deal with that, as well as competitive proposals, sole source purchases, reoccurring purchases, and emergency purchases. So if you've had a chance to read this, if anybody has any questions, by all means, let me know.
I just, I, uh, no, I was gonna say, I went through it, and I think this is something that's been a long time coming anyway for the city. And the auditor, the auditor, that audit that Laura talked about, kinda brought it to a head, but I think this is a policy that's been a long time coming, that we really needed to have something in writing prior as, as whole purchasing policy.
The only thing that I'm a little concerned with is the incidental purchases of five thousand without authorization. I think anything up to five, uh, five thousand dollars should be authorized by the state, at least the city manager.
We did that to cover things like when, um, our department heads need to make major purchases for like salt and gravel and that sort of thing. That's basically what Tom does now. So he knows what his schedule is to be able to purchase those things. Um, I didn't wanna put up roadblocks for him, um, sometimes he needs to do it pretty quickly, so that's what I was.
But those are only designated by you, anyway.
But you were showing me a form that you created, that they all have to fill out no matter what it is now.
Well, right now, we're going through some, um, we're auditing our purchases internally right now.
So they made a form, the arguments filling out right now.
We're getting data on that right now, and, and taking a look from a, about a five-thousand-foot view to see what kinds of things we purchase, how frequently we purchase them.
Are there better ways of doing it?
Does Nemets have a PO-type system? A per, does Nemets have a purchase order system? Cause I know the school, no matter if you've spent, if you spend five cents to ten dollars, whatever, you might need to get a purchase order generally for the employees, had to get a, a purchase order. I'm just wondering if Nemets could do some sort of PO system. It'd be a way of tracking, helping you track it too.
Well, we're sort of going from, from zero to something.
Right, right.
PO system can be very cumbersome too. Uh, I mean, if you, if, say, the department needs to go buy some pens, they're gonna need to do a PO to, I mean.
Well, that, yeah.
I, I've seen that in other industry where you, you need to buy some paper, you need to get a PO to buy a ream of paper, which can be very cumbersome.
It can be, but the only good thing, one good thing is you know what's coming down the pipeline for incoming invoices. You know, I'm getting at, like, near the end of your fiscal year, you kinda have, but this policy, I think, so.
Because if you look at the, at this, the, what we just signed tonight, there's a list that long of pick and shovel.
Right, no, no.
Five dollars, ten dollars, eight dollars.
That's where I think, right, that's where they have that amount.
The other thing I think is that, I think anything above ten thousand dollars should be required, especially if it's construction, you know, major purchases. Uh, a ten thousand dollar purchase to me is a major purchase.
You're talking about minor purchases?
I mean, it should be required to.
What are you changing though, Jack? You're going?
Should get, all purchases over fifteen thousand for a single item require prior approval by the city manager. Uh, the city manager shall review all purposes. I think anything over fifty thousand should be required. That's a specific for what I admit, if it's something. I'm looking at article of the.
Yeah, I see major purchases.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even minor or major, I think that number should be ten thousand, not fifteen.
For prior city manager approval? I think we can live with that. Again, what you just said, we're trying to have a policy that we can work with, that's fluid.
Yeah.
And, and also has that balance of accountability.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm looking for. You know, like last year, we spent fifty thousand dollars on a building, which I think is ridiculous. We overspent on that little building. Without any bidding, no bidding being done, or, you know, competitive bidding being done at all, so.
So you're suggesting changing the minor purchases to, the cap would be between five thousand?
In ten thousand, and then the, the major purchase at a ten, ten oh one.
And at the bottom, for all major purchases of the value of exceeding, you have to change that to ten thousand.
Right, right, exactly, yeah, yeah.
I don't see any.
Well, ten thousand and one, I guess.
Yeah, ten thousand and one, yeah.
I don't see any issues with that.
I don't have any problem with that, I don't think that would be.
I think it's all, I think it's.
That's the only thing I saw, when I saw the number.
You know, fifteen thousand is, you know, pretty high as well.
Other than that, it's.
Yeah, other than that, it's.
Way longer than we do.
Yeah.
So can we just check page five? We've got recurring purchases, there's a fifteen thousand dollar ceiling there too. Is that something we should change?
That's the reoccurring, so for example, your, um, fuel purchase?
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah, yeah. I'm surprised we can have one.
I know, you're gonna get a couple more coming up, we need a new sick leave policy, I'm in the process of.
Oh, yeah, because of the state.
I'm glad you mentioned fuel purchase. Have we heard, last year we signed contracts in.
In February, I bet we'll hear, any day, I bet we'll hear this week.
Okay, so, and we need a, um, is the council happy with the changes?
Yes.
We would need a vote.
I'm moved to adopt the, uh, purchase, uh, purchase policy.
With, with the changes.
With the changes.
Right, with the changes.
Oh, second.
So motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion on that? And hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Good.
Do you wanna sign one?
I can.
I, I gave, I gave changes in ten on this one.
Okay.
So I think you can sign that.
I'll put today's date, today is the, what?
Six. Thank you, that's a lot of work, I just got done.
The next meeting, we need to discuss the restructuring, the. Yeah, okay, just, the pop's taken.
We all need to sign this.
Do we all?
Cause it's a policy, so we should all sign it.
Mr. Wilson?
Whoops.
Are we gonna have a pending litigation contract?
Oh, yeah.
Executive decision?
Yeah. Okay.
We need stuff here, so we'll have to grab this signal.
Thank you.
Hey.
Good work.
Mr. Johnson, new business. Mr. Wolf, Mr. Obeir.
Uh, no. Not for the.
Anything new?
Nothing.
Laura, any new business?
Not for me, thank you.
Chief?
We have, any appetite left for new policies?
Very little.
I gave you, I'm giving you a copy of our public records policy, the policy we had in effect since the law changed, that took effect in two thousand and sixteen. I was just talking to the state archivist this week about an unrelated topic, and she brought to my attention that, uh, for a long-standing period of time, uh, the police department has charged a consistent fee for, uh, reports, police reports, and for media. So they go out to a, um, accident scene and someone, yeah, usually it's insurance companies that come to us and say, you know, we want copies of all the accident photos, and all the body cam footage, et cetera, et cetera. We charge fifteen dollars, uh, for a written report regardless of length, so if it's a page or a thousand pages, it's fifteen dollars. And digital media, if it's one picture or six hours' worth of interviews, it's forty-five dollars. Um, according to the state archivist, that needs to be adopted by the council, not, it can't just be adopted by the police chief. So if you take a look at page three, uh, towards the bottom of the page under charges, section B, one and two is what I've added to our current, uh, police policy. And if you guys agree to the fee schedule, I just need the mayor to sign off, and the city clerk to with us.
Is it? That's not very much.
No, uh, most police depart, um, under police departments and the state charge up to twenty-five dollars for a written report.
Well, it's per page, normally, I would think that we could.
Public, uh, I deleted that section. So public records requests state that you can charge, I think it's five cents per page, per copy, um, and no more than that, unless the city council approves a fee structure that is quote-unquote reasonable. So.
Well, five cents is not reasonable, paper costs more.
Yeah, well, we talked about setting up a fee structure.
Well, that was for.
City, anyway. Or not only, but I think we probably would work for this too, uh, quite a while ago, setting up a fee structure for, for documents. Cause you kinda have one down the street already. Yeah, okay. Probably the publicans look at those.
Went to a workshop on.
So we could have one fee structure for everybody.
The problem with that is, is that if you give, the problem that I see from my perspective is, if you have a fee schedule that works for the entire city, and now someone comes to the window and says, I want a copy of these three reports. My dispatcher, who's dealing with all the other emergencies calls down there, is gonna have to pull out this policy and check to say, okay, this report is seven pages, and the digital media that corresponds to that case is sixteen pictures, and one recorded interview for an hour and fifteen minutes, it becomes a logistical nightmare.
It does say we have to immediately make it available, doesn't it?
I mean, within a reasonable time. But if she, if they're tied up, you don't need to make that available immediately.
No, absolutely not, but, and again, that comes back into, do you want me spending my time figuring out what the fee for this one particular accident case is? Or do you want me to just continue doing police work?
Well, I also don't want you to give your time away.
Yeah, especially if you have.
We can adopt the secretary of state's schedule too. Five cents a page.
So if you only have one page, you only make a legal.
Yep.
If you can't do a minute, that's, that's crazy.
It's not gonna be tear damage, no.
No, obviously, no.
Um, is this something that can wait to the next council meeting?
I will not be here for the next council meeting, but we can certainly table it, yeah.
Cause usually when we make votes on something, we try to warn it, have an agenda. Chance to think of, go through and read it, and.
Did you have a deadline?
Is there a deadline on this?
No. We, we'll charge nothing for reports until.
We charge a dollar a page.
You can't charge for any, what's your average?
Not, it's not any.
What's your average traffic per report?
Can we, can we charge?
For what? I think we had a dollar a page with a fifteen-dollar minimum, so that gives them fifteen pages.
Somebody wants to come in and get a copy of the D, for example, it's a dollar a page.
Yeah, yeah.
Why goes a ten dollars for a copy?
So if we have a minimum.
Minimum of fifteen.
Yeah, dollar a page with a fifteen-dollar minimum. Uh, digital media, I'm lost there, I mean, I don't like it with that, the entails, or, are you burning a copy or something, or?
Could be burning copies of multiple things, if they want video camera footage from the cruiser, and then somebody's body cam video, and then the interview room, and the processing room, and all of the digital photographs that we took.
It's forty-five dollars, so that's pretty low, but.
That was, was in state statute, that we can charge the public defender's office for a copy of, um, DUI.
Forty-five dollars. So what's the average size of a digital media?
There is no such thing as average, it could, that traffic accident out here could be.
Well, what, your request, I mean, is it, you gotta handle it.
I, I'm not, I don't understand questions, sorry.
Well, what's your average? Size of the media file that you?
Again, it would depend, if you're talking a simple traffic accident out here, it could be five megapixels.
Okay.
Um, if you're talking, uh, you know, the Dan Kelly incident, you're talking probably six to seven CDs worth.
Okay, so a minimum of five megapixels, to a maximum of whatever, so.
Which is why I said forty-five dollars regardless of size.
Megapixels to you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not a megapixel boy.
Well, it all depends on the length, it all depends, the longer any video goes, the much larger it takes, like, like you're saying, that was six hours, right? At least, that was way more than six hours.
Yeah, that would be.
That was, like you said, that would've been.
Put it forty-five dollars.
But that's, that's right, so I think that's a, but is it, can you go higher than what they have here, as state laws say you can charge no more than forty-five?
You turn until somebody contests court, and then we get tied up in a court battle with the.
Can we charge an hourly fee, like twenty-five dollars an hour, a minute, don't?
So we gotta have to follow state law then? On this?
You can adopt that, or you can adopt the secretary of state's schedule record of, blah.
Right.
But it says, well, whatever's reasonable, and I think, let's go with the written report. A dollar a page with a minimum of fifteen dollars, I think is reasonable. You get the first fifteen pages for fifteen bucks, after that, you pay a dollar, I, I don't think that's unreasonable. Yeah, I guess I'll leave the digital media the way it is, because I'm not sure how that will play out, I'm sorry.
Just, I've just got a curio, a question about the digital media. I mean, CDs, I mean, you can't even buy CDs anymore without looking for them. So you're talking about a thumb drive, really, which holds, you know, ten CDs easily. Um, it's just a question of plugging it in and setting the copying going. If the person who wants it has to cool their heels while you're waiting, it really doesn't matter whether it takes a quarter of a second or half an hour. Plugging it in and taking it out is the same thing. I, frankly.
Time to put it together.
Well, I mean, presumably, uh, the chief's files are already organized. So if you're saying one case and a video, I, I, I mean, it's there already, isn't it? I mean, if you need it, it's, you know where to look for it, don't you?
We're providing the thumb drive? Nope, they're, they're, they're providing.
I, 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 all I'm saying is, I mean, I don't, it, it's not a, a huge issue to me, but I think that, um, if someone, well, I, I think you ought to provide the thumb drives, not because, uh, it's a, it's a great deal. I mean, they don't cost that much, but you wanna use a clean thumb drive just because you don't wanna put someone else's in there.
We don't want viruses.
But, um, it just seems to me that you've got a, a medium that costs three dollars, and, you know, the time spent is really gonna be spent by the person getting it. If you get forty-five bucks for that, you're making a profit.
I totally agree with that, I mean, if you've got six CDs to burn, you may not be, but.
But you don't, you, you don't use any CDs, you just.
Thumb drive. Well, yeah, whatever.
What are you using currently, chief?
DVDs.
You're using the CD DVDs.
Yep.
Well, this should be for the next agenda, next down.
Yeah.
So it'll be worn on the next one?
It'll be worn for the, chief can't be here the next meeting, but it'll be for the one after.
March sixth.
March sixth.
That's our, that's our information, we're leaving right.
Right, but it could be that night.
Okay. I mean, I got, fine.
Okay. So, you, hey, did you have anything new?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, old business.
Yeah, I got a loan documents, we need to sign for the new crew, or the, you mean, crew and the chief to purchase.
Cruiser or the fire one?
Cruiser.
Cruiser, okay.
Food backing.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I remember something like that. So I need everybody in the council to sign.
Oh, yeah, they do.
Uh, don't sign the second page, that's for me, so.
You're still coughing.
Not as much.
Not as much. It lasts a long time.
We're all so much better.
Thousand percent better. Just this one, this one.
That's good. You wouldn't want it worse. Oh, I still get scratching.
Well, you're exposed like diamonds.
It's not great.
Any other old business, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Wolf, oh, Mr. Johnson, you said no? You said no?
No.
Okay, no, nothing, Mr. Obeir?
I do, uh, I've had a couple of meetings with, one with Andy and Laura and Jessica, on the, uh, Camp Brown Reorganization in Friday Beach. And I had one last week with Andy alone. He called me in, I'd like to have that on the agenda. I think we're, I'm gonna meet with you, hopefully tomorrow, and go over what he discussed with me. And I believe you're meeting with him tomorrow as well, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I'd like to have that on the agenda for next meeting, so we can finally bring together all the ideas that have come forward,
to the budget process.
With a plan.
Yeah, to the budget process, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the own?
Uh, no, that's all I got.
I've got nothing, anything?
I have the same thing.
You have the same?
Okay, then I'll say, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, anything? All right, then, then the next regularly scheduled council meeting will be February twenty-seventh, six thirty P M. Then we have a centennial planning meeting on the twentieth, at five thirty P M. And then we have, just for, uh, the informational meeting, well, council meeting will be March sixth. So now we need an executive session for personnel. Need a motion. Uh, there's two separate issues.
So move.
Okay, well, we need to go into executive session, personnel, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The ayes have it.
Are you expecting a decision of some sort, or?
Personnel? No.
How do you go about getting some?